All right. So, call to order. This is the March 4th, 2024 Select Board meeting. Call to order, roll call.
Hard cop here.
Gibson here.
Scoscia here.
Capello here. Please rise and join me with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda review and approval. Any comments about the agenda?
I was hoping before we do that, we might do a quick non-public for reputation, Madam Chairperson.
Okay. And we could do that after 5A and B.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
So I would make a motion that we enter non-public for a quick meeting and then move about the consent agenda.
Second.
Hard cop, I.
Gibson, I.
Scoscia.
Capello, I. Okay.
And there's one other change on the consent agenda. The deputy town treasurer, Tiffany Cottle, the motion reads that she would be appointed as the treasurer?
Yes.
And she doesn't want that job.
It's deputy, right?
That should read deputy.
Yes.
So we'll amend that.
All right. It means deputy everywhere else, but not in the motion.
Excellent.
Anything else with the agenda? Nope. Okay. Public comments? Is there anyone in the room here for public comment? Is there anyone online for public comment?
Be another opportunity for public comment at the end of the meeting as well.
Looks like we have known, we have none. So we'll move on to item five, public hearing and invited guests. A school board liaison report. I don't think there's anyone here from the school board. So let's move on to the 2023 Volunteer of the Year recognition. So this is a fun part of the Select Board meeting tonight.
Just by way of background, so the Select Board last year recognized that there's a lot of volunteers in the community that do a lot of good work, and our government relies on volunteers in the community. And that's really important because getting people to donate their time and put themselves out there in front of the community for their volunteer roles is essentially important. And so the Select Board took upon themselves an initiative to start a process for recognizing those volunteers. And so the end of last year, the Select Board advertised a nomination form for volunteers in the community and solicited numerous nominations for volunteers that the Select Board discussed to award Barrington's first-ever Volunteer of the Year, which they're prepared to do tonight.
So we actually had a tough time. We had some really spectacular nominations for Volunteer of the Year. But on behalf of the Select Board, we are going to bestow this honor on Marjorie Shepherd. She is our 2023 Volunteer of the Year. So, Marjorie, why don't you and Scott come up to the TV?
So we each have a little something to say about Marjorie and her application. And one area that brought her application to the top of the consideration listing was your ability to collaborate as a leader within the community and the expansion that you gave to the volunteer group as a whole, the Barrington Bloomers, how you grew the membership, and the amount of increased donations and how people in Barrington are now fully aware of who the bloomers are.
Another thing people may not be aware of is that Marjorie has a passion for recycling and composting. And she actually volunteers and educates people in those efforts to reduce landfill waste. One program that she initiated was working with the Trex Plastic Decking Company, collecting plastic bags for recycling. And I think you have to get over 1,000 pounds or something like that as a community program. And she got awarded a bench, a plastic bench, from Trex that's going to be donated to a school in town for a buddy bench. And my understanding is that you're continuing that program and maybe going to get more benches for the towns. Thank you for that.
And this is the plastic lids as well?
No, it's not the lids.
Not the lids, just the bags.
Marjorie, I love the continued growth of your happiness and volunteerism that encourages others to do the same. And it really puts a nice tip in the hat to the town for when people drive through and come to our buildings. And it's really, you know, your love for the town has shown and will always be here.
And I think if people in Barrington didn't know about the bloomers, last year after the parade for the tricentennial, your float was awesome, and it was recognized as that. So that was, I'm sure, a tremendous effort to bring that together. And to thank you about how beautiful things look around the library because the bloomers take care of those gardens. Very special. So, why don't you come forward?
Farther forward.
Oh, how perfect. Oh, with seeds, true?
Yes.
Oh, that's amazing. Thank you so, so much, all of you.
Well, thank you for what you've brought to Barrington. You came as a resident and...
You'll be seeing me.
I was gonna say. For, what, a year she'll have the poster hanging within the town halls.
Yes, so I don't think we have it here, but this is what you're gonna see.
Oh, my gosh.
And it's, but it's gonna be big, Marjorie. I'm gonna be small like this.
No, just have your email on it, don't worry.
Where the whole world could find her.
But we also have a plaque for you. So it says, "The 2023 Volunteer of the Year, Marjorie Shepherd, in recognition of your collaborative leadership and helping to keep Barrington beautiful, presented by the Barrington Select Board." So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, we'll get a picture with the Select Board after. If you want a break, we'll make a motion to go to non-public.
I'd like to make a motion to enter non-public.
And we should just go in here and let them have a...
Yep. Well, yeah, we'll get a picture. So there was a motion?
Second.
Roll call vote?
Hard cop, yes.
Gibson, yes.
Scoscia, yes.
Capello, I. Okay.
We're live.
We are now back to... That was a wonderful celebration of our first Volunteer of the Year from the Select Board. Thank you, everyone. We'll move on to consent agenda. Any comments?
I'd like to approve the agenda with the deputy for Tiffany Cottle, represented.
Is there a second to that?
Roll call? Hard cop, I.
Gibson, I.
Scoscia.
Capello, I. So we'll move on to appointments, item seven. Appointments for terms expiring in 2024. The Select Board appointments expire, you know, this time of year, each year, March 31st. And we stagger those so it reserves some institutional knowledge for each board and committee. And so we are looking at appointments and reappointments. And our first one up for discussion, the zoning board of adjustment, Parker Fairfield. We had a link to the application. He's interested in becoming a full member of zoning board of adjustment. His previous experience includes serving on the planning board in a neighboring state. He's had conversations with staff and the zoning board of adjustment chair. And this will be a full appointment with a term expiring in 2025. And then his vote will be at the March 18th meeting.
That would be great. There's a...
So you have an opening for a full term?
We do, we do. And he did express that his interest is only in a full-seated position after having three years of experience on a planning board in a neighboring state.
And to be clear, at the time of his application, he hadn't spoken with the chair, but since making the application, him and the chair of the zoning board had a lengthy conversation.
Moving on to energy committee. This is for Jack Bingham. There's a typo here on the agenda where it says Mr. Ramsey. It should say Mr. Bingham was appointed as a founding member of the Energy Commission and is seeking reappointment. This would be a full appointment with a term expiring in 2027. And we would vote on his application at the March 18th meeting.
Great contributor.
Agree? Anybody else? I would agree, Jim. Moving on to transfer station and recycling center review committee, Deborah Klauff. She was appointed as an alternate member of the transfer station and recycling center committee and is seeking reappointment. So this would be an alternate appointment with a term expiring in 2027. And we would vote on her application on March 18th.
Perfect.
Very lucky that our community members are stepping up to volunteer.
Thank you on the continued service.
All right. Let's move along to staff reports. So administer MacDiver.
Yes, first meeting in March here. And I have March work anniversaries. And I love the months, which there are many of these months throughout the year, where we have a tremendous amount of service, very top-heavy work anniversaries. So Stephen Paul in the Highway Department, this is his 24th year in Barrington. If you don't know Steve, white hair, big long beard, always got a smile on his face, really a great contributor in that department. Eric Lindsey, our assistant fire chief, has been drawing a paycheck in Barrington for 23 years. Or was it first paid?
Well, more than drawing a paycheck, right?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, so some of the fire, some of the folks in the Fire Department have been involved longer.
Oh, were volunteer.
Yeah, so this comes with the payroll system. Anyways, Peter Royce, town treasurer, 19 years. Larry Coon in the Fire Department for 18 years. Will Lenharth, also in the Fire Department for 18 years. Amanda Barber, our current detective sergeant, has been with Barrington for eight years. Vanessa Price, town planner, for two years. And Stephanie Sweeney, the Recreation Department, school age coordinator, was hired this time last year. Appreciate the tenure of those employees. Moving on, a lot of this information is just included for your continued information. Nothing has changed here. The one addition was we have the final draft of the Barrington Kids Vote. Included a copy of that in your packet. So one thing I want to call your attention to, you'll notice an oval logo up in the upper-left corner. So that was of the Barrington Kids Vote ballot. That was a project of the Barrington Recreation Team Program. That's that team leadership program. So they got together. We met about Barrington Kids Vote. And one of the things that they wanted to do was develop a logo for 2024 Barrington Kids Vote. So they started with a voting oval. So that's where we got the shape of the oval. They wanted to incorporate, and this was as a group, they wanted to incorporate the Barrington Bulldog. They want to incorporate trees and people because we have a lot of both of those in Barrington. And then for the Kids Vote, I don't know if you or any of your kids ever did this, but you can draw an S by making some lines, and it's kind of like a pointy S shape. Well, apparently that's big in middle school right now. So the Kids Vote is in a font from that design. And you can't really see it at this size, but if you've ever grabbed one of the coffee news flyers, there's always a little gimmick where you have to find the coffee bean hidden somewhere. So there's a coffee bean hidden in the logo also. So when you see it big somewhere, you'll have to look and try to find the coffee bean. Anyway, so Kids Vote will happen alongside the town vote on March 12th.
Oh, Thomas the Tank Engine, that's...
Oh, right. Did we, have we gone through this? So the dog tag colors are orange, red, and purple. Forestry truck, Mighty Marshall, Smokey Barrington, Bartholomew, Thomas the Tank Engine, and Ember Explorer.
Ember Explorer.
So that team leadership program, we let them choose two of the names. So they went through a ranked choice voting process to propose names and narrow them down. So they contributed Bartholomew and Thomas the Tank Engine to that process. And then, of course, the big one is trick-or-treating, when trick-or-treating will be. So we have the Saturday before, the Saturday after, and then the 30th and 31st.
A very hot topic, right?
Although I predict the Saturday after.
I don't think so either, but think about the logic in this. Buy your Halloween candy on November 1st? Trick-or-treat on November 2nd? We'll let the kids decide. And then, of course, the sticker designs were narrowed down to the four designs in each age group. And one sticker design will be chosen from each one.
Great.
Okay, so that's voting, that's kids voting. Training opportunities are listed there for your interest. I'll draw special attention to the local officials workshop. So this is done every year by the New Hampshire Municipal Association. It's free for everybody to attend, in person or virtual. For those that are new, it's certainly a great resource. But for those that have even served for a year or a number of years, it's also really helpful. You pick up new things every time. With the exception of one year, I've attended it every year. And I always have plenty of notes to refer back to. Select Board reorganization.
I could ask one question. Is it the same workshop that's offered twice?
Yes. Correct. Yeah, so some communities hold their town meeting later. So they hold one in April to capture the most, the March town meeting folks. And then they have one in May, which will have been after April and May town meetings. But, yeah, just the same content. Okay, Select Board reorganization. We talked about that before. That will happen on March 18th. Select Board committee assignments. A member asked to have the listing of when the boards meet, how often they meet, and what time. So I'll update that spreadsheet and distribute it to everybody so you have copies. So you can jockey the chair that is select on the 18th for what board, committee, or commission you want to participate in.
Excellent.
Okay, that's all I have. That isn't on the agenda. Actually, we neglected to add one thing to the agenda under new business. It's a release from the Energy Committee for the Community Power Warrant article. So I'd like to discuss that under new business when it's time.
Thank you. Municipal Officer Administrator Cottle, or MOA.
Straight off the consent agenda, we have two meeting minutes that will need signatures. Those will be a docket sign as well as nine oaths of office, also a docket sign. And then I'm told I will have a few abatements for you to sign on Thursday as well. That's it.
All right. Thank you. So old business. 2024 warrant proposed land building purchases and sales agreements. So we looked at these last week, and we will be voting on them tonight.
Right, so there's two. As you know, the warrant development process takes many, many months. And two of the warrant articles this year involve land transfers. And so we're under agreement for both the... And so we're under agreement for both the 426 Caleb Highway and the property, the 13 acres in the town center, the MAP 239 Lot 7. And so what we have is the final version. So the Select Board has reviewed and discussed the terms of these agreements. In the case of the town center lot, the Select Board authorized a letter of intent which included these terms. Anyways, these are the final documents. They're on the town's website. They're linked to the Town Administrator Report. I do just want to briefly go through some of the key points. So for Article 21, that contemplates the purchase of 426 Caleb Highway for the library. So the purchase price of the property, the agreement is to purchase the property for $1 million. The deposit is fully refundable pending the town meeting vote on March 12th. And there's a $20,000 deposit that was put forward from the Barrington Library Foundation. The contingencies are town meeting approval and the bonding approval. So after town meeting votes to approve, then we go through the bonding process. We actually don't get the money usually until August. It takes time. But that's a contingency of the agreement. We certainly don't anticipate any issues, but it's important to have, not make commitments that we can't know until we have that bonding approval to move forward with. One other important note on this one, as a medical office facility, we wanted to make sure we did all of our due diligence. The imaging room was lined with, I actually think they determined it was a lead impregnated drywall that they used as the lead lining in the room. So the seller has agreed to remediate that before the town takes possession.
That's good because I think you showed us that was like $13,000.
Right. Yep, at their cost, yeah.
Excellent.
Not an insignificant cost. Any questions on that one or other discussion? Okay, so the second agreement is for the 13 acres. So this one's a little bit more unique because the plan is to purchase the property through tax increment financing. So this agreement is as an installment sale. So it's similar to seller financed, but notably different. So we will make payments towards the property as tax increment financing revenue comes in. So that's the structure of this one. Other important points, the sale price is $905,000. So important to remember that this has been on the market for 1.2 million. So the, the purchase price is significantly less, 25% less than it was on the market for. There is a refundable deposit of $25,000. There's an additional deposit that would be due after town meeting vote, after that contingency is met. And that's an additional $35,000. It's an installment, installment sale to be paid in full by 2031. There's $150,000 minimum payment starting in 2025, so not this year, but next year. There's no maximum payment or prepayment penalty, which is important. Bonding through the municipal bond bank, you can't pay it off early. So if you get a grant or if you have extra money, you can't put it towards paying down a bond through the bond bank. The interest rate is 4.96% through 2027 and then 6.96% after that. We'll be able to make improvements to the lot, use the property, which is important. And then in the event of default, we'll be able to sell or license a portion of the lot in order to retain it. And so those are the important points of those. But again, the full document for this property and the 426 Caleb Highway are available on the town's website and linked to the Town Administrator Report.
Excellent.
Any questions on that one?
Nope. Sure, I'd like to make a motion to affirm and approve the final purchase and sale agreements for 426 Caleb Highway and MAP 239 Lot 7, the terms of which were reviewed and approved at previous Select Board meetings.
Second?
Roll call.
Hartikapai.
Gibsoni. Skoshai.
Capella. Great, that has Let's move on to New Business.
So you have in front of you a release that the Energy Committee would like to put out relative to the Community Power Warrant Article. So the Energy Committee meets on Thursday, and they discussed at their last meeting messaging and getting a release like this out. The problem is they haven't met to review and approve this and get it out into the community. And so they don't really want to wait till Thursday because that doesn't leave much time until Tuesday. And so I proposed as an option that I would ask the Select Board to review it and authorize advertising the information or putting the, the release of information out so that the, they can get it out tomorrow instead of waiting until Friday. Just because we had a public meeting, it could be discussed. And the Select Board certainly has the authority to authorize the, the release of information kind of with the town's stamp on it. So I'm happy to read it if you'd like.
I think that would be good because most of us are just seeing this.
Barrington to vote on Community Power March 12th. Barrington is the next seacoast area town looking to vote in community power for its electricity at town elections on March 12th. The Town Community Power Committee is collaborating with Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire, CPCNH, to have it be the default electricity supplier for the town residents and businesses. Over a dozen communities throughout the state have already taken this step, bringing lower electric rates and greater electricity choices for their ratepayers. That number will grow to 28 communities this month and cover over 100,000 electric customers. Quote, "This is a great opportunity for Barrington ratepayers to lower their electric rates and have more say in how our electricity is provided," said Paul Panas, Chair of the Barrington Energy Committee. Quote, "We urge voters to support this initiative at the town election so we can move forward on this opportunity," end quote. The vote on March 12th is for warrant article number 39 on the town warrant that would approve an energy aggregation plan required by state statute to institute community power on the local level. The Barrington Select Board has already approved putting this plan on the town warrant by unanimous vote back in November. Community Power is an opt-out electric supplier program in which customers can opt out to stay with Eversource or contract with a third party or supplier. Eversource will continue to distribute power, bill customers, maintain the power lines, and deal with outages. So only the electricity supplier will change under Community Power. In addition, no town funds, other than for administrative review, will be used to fund the program. If approved by voters, Barrington's program will likely launch in June of this year. CPCNH is currently offering a basic rate of 8.1 cents per kilowatt hour, which is among the lowest rates throughout the state and is the rate Barrington customers will pay if voters approve the plan and the program launches in June. CPCNH is a nonprofit, public organization formed to help New Hampshire communities launch community power programs, share administrative resources, and participate in joint electric power purchase solicitations. More than 50 communities across New Hampshire have embraced this program as of the beginning of 2024, allowing their residents to reduce their costs and have greater choice in selection of energy mix to reduce environmental impacts. The Coalition is supporting 18 communities around the state, including Barrington, to launch their community program, power programs this year.
Thank you. Any questions about any
Second?
Okay, roll call.
Hartikapai.
Gibsoni.
Skoshai.
Capella. So we've just voted to allow distribution.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right, moving on, well, any other new business? Moving on to Select Board Members' Reports and Concerns. We'll start with you, Select Board Member Hartikapai.
We have not had a Select Board meeting, and we have, this week on Wednesday is our next housing meeting. So I have nothing to report, Madam Chairperson.
I have nothing since last Monday, but like Connor said, this Thursday is the Energy Committee. Seven o'clock.
I have an urgent news announcement. The REC has just introduced a brand new slow pitch softball league. It'll be Wednesday nights at the BYA from 5:30 to 6:30, starting in July. They have also partnered with Dante's to offer half-off appetizers if you show up with your jersey on. Should be a fun time if people show up.
Great. I don't have anything to report either. I know when we have meetings only a week apart, many of us don't have reports. Planning Board will meet tomorrow evening. I imagine there will be many residents there. So moving into public, our second public comment, any comments from anyone in the room? I guess not, okay. And anyone online who would like to make a public comment? Looks like, okay, and we do not have a reason for non-public.
Motion to adjourn, Madam Chairperson.
Roll call.
Hartikapai.
Gibsoni. Skoshai.
Capella. I would like to note, this might be the shortest meeting we've had since I've been on the board. This is 40 minutes.
Oh, okay.
So you just